Should have a roll call.
Mayor Truman.
Here.
Councilmember Colbert.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory. Councilmember Kerstetter.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Stam.
Here.
Please all stand for the invocation and prolegial allegiance, please.
Good evening. My name is Troy Price. I'd like to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to be here and to offer this prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you this day for this opportunity to be together in this city council meeting. We pray for these leaders as they discuss this community and what to do for this community to make it better. We are grateful for a great community who have safety, where our families can grow and progress. We pray for any who are moving this way and interested in this community, that it might be a safe place for them, that they can enjoy, that their families can come and enjoy this place. We're grateful for those who lead, and we pray for your guidance this night. We pray for any who might struggle in our community. Bless us to be sensitive for them. Bless us with thy peace, thy guidance through this night. Bless us to remember thee in all that we do, and we're thankful, Heavenly Father, for all we have, for this great place. And we say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
By the leg of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Moving on to the approval of the tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to the administration agenda, the city council minutes of November 18th.
Motion to approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2025, regular council meeting as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the November 18th council meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to item B, this city council special meeting, minutes of November 24th, 2025.
Motion to approve the minutes of November 24th, 2025, special call meeting, council meeting as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the minutes of November 24th, 2025. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to presentations, proclamations, we don't have any. Moving on to public forum, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on from there. We don't have any appointments. Old business, new business. Moving on to item A, the CHIPS 2025-02 application.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is a commercial housing incentive application from K2M Investments LLC. They're applying for eight duplex buildings or 16 total units on Hayes Street. Included in the packet has a picture of the majority of those, couldn't quite get them all in one picture, but they are, were just completed in February of 2025, and the owner has submitted everything required, and we're staff are recommending approval for that program. Just as a reminder, that is a three-year, 100% portion of the city tax rebate to that property owner, as long as they own all of them, because these do have a lot line down the middle. They have to own both sides of each building to qualify for that rebate. So if they sell one, they won't qualify on that whole building.
Any questions? No, damn.
Could you clarify that? So they're duplexes, and they have to maintain ownership of both sides of the duplex.
Correct, because this is for multifamily housing. If they sell one side, they're not owning multifamily housing.
Then it becomes void.
Correct, for that one unit.
Okay.
Matt, how often do you check? Yearly, six months?
We check annually, so they have to pay their first, they have to pay all their property taxes in full, so we verify after the second half is due in the spring, late spring, and usually they get their checks in June. The resolution says, I believe, by July 30th, they'll have their refund check, but we usually try and get them out beginning of June, but we do check annually before the checks are issued if they're still under ownership. If they have sold, we usually look and see when it's sold to see if they qualify for the previous year or not.
Any questions or comments? Get a motion to approve.
Move to approve application from K2M Investments LLC for CHIP 2025-2.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the CHIP 2025-02 application. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on for approval agreement with Baker Tilly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, I want to talk to you about a proposal that I'm bringing forth to you from Baker Tilly. Just kind of give you a quick history on what this is. We have a TIF district in Valley Center, which I'm sure most of you know quite a bit about, but Amy, I'm going to kind of catch you up a little bit on it. But essentially, the TIF district is where the new school is, the new school area is, and it launched about four years ago, and right after it launched, it was immediately shut back down by the Army Corps of Engineers for additional permitting. It's really just now kind of starting to move forward at the speed that we were kind of all hoping for. Because of that, a lot of the models that the previous finance director had kind of come up with are essentially null and void. They're just, we're way behind where we thought we were going to be. I'm now at the point where I have a number of these bonds for these TIF districts that are about to come due. By 6126, I have an additional 4.835 million of TIF district bond that has to be financed by June 1st of next year. In addition, there's another 5.49 million that will be covered by specials, 960,000 will be covered by specials, and 6.3 million only TIF that will be fall of 2027. All that totals is, we have about 17.6 million that we still have to bond for the city of Valley Center, and 11.1 million of that is TIF district that really does not have a true revenue source at this point. So what I started doing was having some casual conversations with a company called Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly is a large national consulting group founded in 1931. They are throughout the United States, and they work in a lot of different areas, but I reached out and just kind of started talking to some of the ones that are finance experts that only deal in government finance, nothing else. There's a person named Matt Lon, who a few of you might know, he was the finance director at Goddard for over a decade, and he also holds the title of CPFO, which is a Certified Public Finance Officer, which means he passed a series of seven very difficult math tests to get that certification. There's very few people in Kansas that have that certification, and he now works for Baker Tilly. Essentially, what I wanted to visit with Matt about was, I have two concerns. One's kind of a larger one, and one's a smaller one, but I just wanted to start visiting with him about that. The one that's had me concerned is this TIF district. As I stated, it was delayed, the models aren't working, and Baker Tilly came to our offices about, oh, two weeks ago. They brought a whole team of people, and I wasn't sure really where the meeting was going to go, but right off the bat, they started throwing out ideas on the TIF district that I did not conceptually know were even possible. They've worked with TIF districts all throughout the United States, they're familiar with them. They had ideas like, most of the time when you bond something, it goes into what's called a 10-year call, which means for 10 years, you cannot alter that bond. They threw the idea of taking some of these TIF district bonds and turning them into five-year calls, which would allow us to, if things are moving forward, we could pay it down quicker. If things are still moving slowly, we could refinance that bond after five years and move it down the road a little bit and that kind of stuff. It gives us flexibility. Now, there's a small premium for that, and there would be a slightly higher interest rate, but again, it gives the city flexibility for the upcoming bonds that we have. The second issue I wanted to talk to them about was the 2025-1 Geo Bond for the Rett Center. Essentially, the Rett Commission, City Hall, have some slightly different understandings on how that was going to be divided between the two of us. We've had some additional conversations on that. This one's really not a large concern of mine, but it is still an ongoing thing that we've got to kind of finalize. And then after that, they asked me, what are their concerns? What are the things going on in the city? Are people talking about? And I had to tell them one that seems to be becoming a lot bigger problem for us, which is, the competitor cities around Valley Center are kind of pulling away from us on a salary and benefit standpoint. Of the four quartiles, with fourth being the highest and one being the lowest, I would say most Valley Center employees are now in the first quartile, with a small percentage in the second quartile. We have had 26% turnover in 2025. That's unsustainable. Some of our competitor cities, for instance, Park City last year gave every single employee in the city a 20% across-the-board rate. That's who we're competing against. I'm not trying to get us to the point where we're competing against Wichita salaries, which are obviously going to be higher, but we do need to stay competitive with the Mays, the Goddards, the Andovers, Park City, Bel Air, essentially sister-type cities that are about our size, and right now, they're kind of pulling ahead of us. When I brought this up to Baker Tilly, this was a very big concern of theirs. They said, a lot of cities that when this gets too far behind, it really has a way of taking the city apart. So while I was concerned with the other item on the TIF district, they were kind of reassuring, hey, we know how to do TIF districts, we're going to be fine. They think this needs to be addressed at some point in the near future. So the proposal I have before you tonight is a contract. It only deals with the first two items. What I'm wanting them to do is essentially help me build models. They want to hire a real estate agent that's an expert in the Valley Center market, bring them into the TIF district, and try to help model, how quickly can we fill up these different, you know, Auburn Ridge, Prairie Lakes, 3, 4, 5, 6, and all these different things that we have going on there? How quickly can we feasibly get that and start building models to help us with that? In addition, they would help us structure the two upcoming TIF bonds. They would also help us kind of figure out how to handle the Rett Commission things, get some different models built up on that. And again, all this is going to have to happen very quickly. My first bond comes up June 1st of 2026. I essentially have to have a game plan on how we're going to model that by early March, so there's not a lot of time to do all this. What I would then do is, once we have some models, anybody on the council would like to be a part of it, but I'll catch the new city administrator up to speed, and essentially try to develop a game plan on how we want to take these things forward. If we like the work that they do, if we like the ideas they have, we could later do a kind of a phase two to this, and, excuse me, I've got something in my throat tonight. Then we kind of start handling the salary issue if there's still, you know, interest and desire to head down that path. But again, this proposal tonight is only for the first two parts. So kind of in summary, Valley Center has complex but still manageable challenges ahead. We have a lot of debt that's about to come on board. Everything that's happened at this point in time, I'm very comfortable with. I understand I have a game plan. This final TIF stuff, right now, it's so far behind, I just don't feel like I have a good game plan on it. And to be honest with you, I'm stretched a bit thin right now. I've got my normal workload, I'm covering for the part of the city administrator job, we're getting out of the enterprise contract, and then we're doing the absolutely massive Casselto-Tyler conversion in 2026. Got a lot of my year working on that conversion. What I'm essentially asking for tonight is to try to get some help, hire some experts. To me, this isn't like court shoes, or if we get horseshoes, or if we get close to the target, we get a point. I want us to hit the bullseye and get these bonds absolutely correct. And what they think it's going to cost is anywhere between $5,000 on this first round. The good news is, what I brought to you two weeks ago, refinancing some of those contracts that we have with Fleet, I think is going to essentially pay for this. General fund transfers $58,000 per year off to Fleet. Because we're going to refinance those vehicles and save so much money next year, I essentially can reduce that transfer off to Fleet and pay for this thing in cash. It's not going to have any budgetary impact for us for 2026. I'm just going to reduce my transfer. So essentially, tonight, that's kind of what it is, but I'm just asking for help. I want Valley Center to get this right. They have ideas that I've not thought of, and I think it would be very beneficial for the city to consider this, and just to make sure that we hit the bullseye while we can. Any more questions?
Yeah. So I think this is a good idea, get lots of, as much help as we need. In here, it says on page 63 of your, of the handout, fees for services set forth will be billed monthly at standard hourly rates, it's at the top, in the table below, not to exceed 7,950. So is that the, and the monthly fee won't exceed?
Yes, essentially, they're going to stay on that on a monthly basis, and again, this is going to happen in a very short timeframe. Probably, we would have this all wrapped up within 60 to 75 days. They said that this is going to be under $25,000 on.
So if we authorize that $25,000 mark to stay under it, is that what you're asking for?
I'd like to put it as a specific dollar amount. Again, I'm going by their estimates. I'm just asking for another set of eyes to look at our situation.
I think that's a great idea, okay.
I think whatever it comes to, even if it goes to 40, I still think it's just me reducing the transfer, and it's going to be paid for essentially in cash with what I brought to you two weeks ago. So I don't think this is going to be. I think 25,000 would be fine, but on the flip side, I wouldn't want to really have to cut it off and have to come back.
My thought was, we authorize that 25,000, and then if you exceeds it, you just come back and ask for more. Yeah, that's all I'm at, all I'm saying. That way, we can also get an update whenever it's appropriate. Well, yeah.
I agree with Dale. With everything that Clint brought forth, and the timing of the changing of our city administrator, who typically would be helping in a lot of these issues, we've asked Clint to shoulder a lot of the extra stuff along with Christie, and I think this is absolutely a no-brainer. So that's a yes for me.
Amy?
I'm curious about the high turnover rate. I've been concerned about that since I started, and I actually just had a conversation with Rodney about it maybe two weeks ago. Are there certain departments within the city that we're seeing a higher turnover rate than others, or is it across the board?
I would say Rodney and Neil's team have had higher turnover. Kyle's had quite a bit this year too, but the difference that we're seeing now is they're actually telling us, I'm going to work for neighboring city for an extra $4 or $5 an hour. They're very clear that our pay is not where it needs to be. And my ideal dream scenario would be, we get these bonds set up correctly, they help us carve out some additional money or some breathing room, or smooth that curve out a little bit, and possibly, we come back to council and talk about how we could catch up a little bit, so to speak. I don't know if that's possible. I really don't. I know that we obviously got to make sure that we can pay for the bonds first. The 2027 budget's coming up, I'm going to be starting on that here in a matter of just a few months. That is, I have $5.2 million in bond payments in 2027. Lot of money. So I have, it's going to be a challenging upcoming budget season, but I'm hoping that there's some ways that we can get creative and address some other concerns too. So, again, that's phase two, but I think it's a very important phase two, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Get a motion to approve?
So do we want to do a motion where we caveat with that 25?
I'll wing it. Motion to approve agreement with Baker Tilly, in the initial amount, not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the contract with Baker Tilly, not to exceed 25,000 monthly?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to Resolution 805-25, GAAP waiver.
This is an annual resolution that we do, we bring before council. Most cities in the state of Kansas, though there are a few exceptions, use a modified cash basis for accounting. It's not truly accrual, it's not really a cash basis. Don't really recognize long-term liabilities. We just come before council every year for a resolution to continue to pass with our modified cash basis, and this is our annual resolution that we bring at the end of the year to say that that's our game plan for the upcoming year.
Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve Resolution 805-25 GAAP waiver.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve Resolution 805-25 GAAP waiver. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Moving on to an executive session?
This time, I move for council to recess an executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matter, exception KSA 75-4319B1, to include council mayor Christie Cruthers and Clint Miller for 10 minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and second to go into executive session for 10 minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. We will be adjourned till 7:32. We will adjourn until 7:32.